Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to have Sam
Let's bow our heads and pray. Lord, I thank you for this day, for your blessing and mercy in our lives. Lord, for an opportunity to serve you here in the city. I pray you would bind us together tonight with a cord of love and a spirit of understanding. We'll laugh under our feet and alight under our pathway. We ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. And everybody say, Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to call the committee on City of Seymour a work. Can I get a roll call?
Jim Ashley, Mary Carpenter, Nadine Chris, Dan Wimmer.
Yes.
It is the committee on the floor.
Hey, Ben, we got the approval of the minutes. Everybody have the minutes from the permit?
Yes.
Move to check the minutes is ready.
Sir.
Motion for anybody? I agree with you.
You judge call on paper?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sure here, your business approval of bills.
The stainless steel chain 682 put that.
That is for the sewer plant or where you go down in there and the dirt water or that acid and stuff. They was going out to Clotter buying that steel chain and it eaten that steel chain up. When we tried to lift them up, he was dropping them pumps down to the bottom of it. Wow, he was having a hard time getting out. So we bought stainless steel chain and shackles stuff where they had to fish them out. Then we bought extra. That way, the ones that we didn't want to mess with the ones that already had steel chain on there that when we pull them up, we'll change it over to stainless steel chain. Because then when they first come from the factory, they had stainless steel chain.
So where did that come from Mitch? What do you check about?
That is down in Joplin, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we looked everywhere and that place there was, I mean, by far the cheapest. I mean, Granger and different ones, just looking online. And that place there, I believe it's Joplin or down in there, it's in Missouri. There's where we're there to come in.
What about Walmart 692?
Oh, that's where we got our safe from, the water fireproof safe.
So, well, the little yards didn't have something like that here?
We researched and researched and got the best price. I doubt that it's out of the way or not. Not sure.
Because after it flooded out that one time when it closed up and broke and everything that in cemetery and records and stuff. Reason they bought it, you know, where it could protect all that stuff where though if it flooded out again or whatever.
It's 455 riding. Crank riding.
Crank riding class, that was Doug Smith when he just got back from that.
How many days was that or how long was that?
I believe it was two.
455, what? It said all he has to go through two days on that?
Yes, yes ma'am.
And Lance Davis, where did he go? 396.
Was part of his training for the lineman. He'd be twice a year, isn't that right?
Yeah, indeed. But last year, his mom, when she got her leg cut off for dopings, he had to miss the training for last year, last spring. So they let him make it up this year. So he went two weeks back to back, one to make up for last year and then this year.
She's doing a couple of rounds. Lance's mother smelt up straight from last, really nice way. This debit card transfer, what is that? $700 and $300?
That's transferring money from the regular account over to the debit card. For when you do debit card purchases, the cover purchases. And like those stainless steel chains, we have it purchased with debit card, saved with the debit card. So we have all those bills in front of you.
And uniforms, 467, 167, nine?
Bet them up.
Or just t-shirts?
No, that's still our rentals. We are working, we can't.
We have a contract on that.
Yeah, we have a contract. We don't, I mean, we can, we're going to cancel the shirts that Chuck said last meeting.
But they're not canceled?
No, because we gotta wait for the other shirts to get, they're getting made right now.
Barns at over $400 and 18 cents, $399. What's that?
Books.
I thought it was girl can buy $100 for books.
I don't know when she bought them or.
She'll base.
Well, it's in her budget, she based budgeted for this year, she has a book budget.
Little eagle, is that for the cemetery or for the playground 697? Lens drilling, what's that?
That is our town inspection, should I say.
Home pride, five thirty.
That's our sewer savings we pay every month.
Vans plumbing, what's that?
Unwinterizing.
But we don't have guys can unwinterize a bullet?
What is, I don't know.
$50.
Sunny always makes sure that fountain thing works proper and everything for the cooling and all that on it for water fountain deal when he puts it in there.
When is that open Mitch?
Uh, we opened it last Monday?
Last Monday.
Yeah, the school was wanting, they was supposed to go someplace else. Last minute they wanted it open over here and we was all doing something. But we just, it's sunny day.
Laser printer, do you know what it is?
No, it's one for the police and one for children.
There's two of them, one here and another one. How much overtime did we get? Most likely a bit of overtime. Like last week, some of them.
Oh, cleanup. And then we had the holes break and then we had a water leak. That, yeah. So, yeah, that's a lot of overtime.
Well, if it was big enough, I was quite low considering what all we had.
Well, nobody knows what we have, so, so what, what did we have? Nobody knows.
Well, you can do your homework like I do and you know.
I think there was a leak over by my house. There was a leak over by my house.
Like you're a head chief walking in here.
Well, you should come see me like you came to see me.
Open your door, then you probably would.
Thank you for coming to town, by the way, my house. I, that's all I've got.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll say this.
I have a favor. Well, we are at citizens' comments. Do we like to step up front, speak to the people? All right. Good to see you.
Need somebody to sit here if you'd like.
Yeah, I just, everything's fine. It was a little rough the other day. Everything, I got it.
I'm glad, we fixed, thank you for cleaning that up to help Ron clean that up there. It's really, it's looking nice. You're blessed, you know that, don't you?
Yeah, I got, I got a little bit worse than that. Everything was like, glittered ribs, punchy plums, you'd be like, right? But everything just cracks and then all this.
That's good.
It not worse.
Well, no comment. We have a text day. No parking signs.
You ready?
Yeah, we're ready. Great, it's all right. I was wanting to set my no parking signs back up in front. I go see a lot of times, they line that up all the way through there and think you got a soul in there. A lot of them, when it's all lined up like it, we have had them walk in and they say they haven't parked over by the post office or somewhere back over in there. And it'd just be a lot easier. They, we just pick them back up.
Are you talking about like during the lunchtime hour? With the, like with the senior centers serving lunch, is that?
Well, that and when they, on Tuesday, they, you know, we're usually gone but we've been closing that too. And then over the Friday till eight. And then they just, hopping on all day long. They have some kind of park there and they don't leave, they'll have to leave them home. And then sometimes they're there the next morning. So it's same way all the way up through there.
How many signs you want to put up text?
I'm just going to put them up in front of the.
Of your business?
It is, and then the one next door, the four signs there.
It seems we all done that. There was no place for a lot of people to park.
Yeah, but if there were a lot of people, they won't park nowhere but right in our front door.
Yeah.
Now, can't you realize that we can enforce that, that's a public street? And businesses don't all park in spots. I mean, the sign can be there if it was there.
Well, a lot of people will pay attention.
Right, right, right.
If the honest ones will.
Right, well, we could enforce, someone's parked that wasn't eating at your restaurant, we couldn't. But we couldn't send our people to tell them to leave.
No, I know.
You understand that?
Yeah. Yeah, we had them up there, they worked good for a while, you know.
But then everybody, all down through there was complaining, you know. Then the beauty shop was there and there's complaining and.
They all brought ours in the back when they was back there. We said, you can get in and out of our building in the back or up and down the alley when that was there. And it's gone. And.
Do you feel that this lack of parking is affecting your business?
Yeah. A lot of people said, but we went on, went somewhere else. You know, when no place to park. And it was in the soul in the dang building. There's one working there. You know, I just, and then down here on the end, she never did take hers down.
I know it's her.
Well, pay attention to them. I parked there every day. Every day. I did, I don't know why they didn't make her take hers down when everybody else took.
I just found them first, ma'am.
Yes, you did. But since there were four beauticians in the beauty shop there for me, they're through all the time now, but you know. You know, I don't want to park in places. There are times that there's a lot of people at the senior center that's not very often anymore. Uh, maybe when the day that the bank pays for our lunch, there's usually a lot of people there then. But other than that, we don't have over 15 people in there and, you know, they don't. A lot of them come together. So.
Linda told them that they got over there across the road down the back.
Right, right.
They can park there, you know, on the north side.
Yeah, and I think they pretty much try, you know, try to do that.
But there's still, there are three, they've one that parks there every day, right? There where there's no parking place at all. But there were the.
By the fine handicap?
Yeah. Yeah, but ain't nobody, you know, if they're parked all the way up through there, they'll park right there where the yellow lines are every time.
How many signs would it be if you covered all your front?
How many?
How many signs would it be? Four, four signs?
Yeah, I had signs and I stole one. And I was over.
But see, if we all put up signs, nobody'd have any place to park. If we all, if we all put up signs, then nobody would park there. And you wouldn't have any business.
Yeah, there will no park here. The sign don't mean nothing to them, it's just.
Well, I'm going to just, if it says no parking, that means no parking.
It just, I just know when you're signs. Way out like that.
Well, it's a public, you know, it's a public square. So I don't, I hardly know what you keep people, you know, for those signs.
Well, it is a public square, but it's private business.
Well, yeah, I'm surprised it business.
I guess that's right.
Paul, will you give us your legal interpretation? I mean, can, is this really our issue or is this really?
There's nothing we could do to enforce it, like you said. So the reality, and you probably don't want no parking signs put on city on property.
Right.
Saying you can't park there. So I mean, I guess, I guess all I would say is, I mean, you're in essence, as a business owner, if you want to put something in their window suggesting that the parking space is in front of their business, please, we'll keep those parking places to patrons of my business or something like that. I mean, at the end of the day, if everybody says, I'm parking there, don't care, it's a public parking place, there's nothing you can do to stop them. But, I mean.
Subsequently, is there anything that we can legally do to stop them from doing that?
Not if they want to put a sign in their window or whatever.
On the post or?
Well, I mean, the post, if they're, if we on the posts, you know. Okay, if the business owns a post, I mean, I guess if you, it's not, can't be an official looking sign, but it just. We can enforce it either way.
Right.
So, so I mean.
I don't have suggestions.
Is this even our issue to sit around and?
Really, it's our, really not.
We could sign and tell text, do whatever is not our deal.
Sure, Mike.
Well, is the sidewalk belong to the city?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, the E and S actually got it on that, so when we're done.
I, I have a question, the fact that my sidewalk is owned by the city since I paid for it.
Well, I paid for it, I live there.
Well, I didn't pay that.
And I sold that awning that hangs over my building, I paid $10,000 for that, so I have a team donor, somebody to tell me what I'm going to do with my awning, because I built it. I think that's your awning.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really not a city issue because the city can enforce it. I guess my thought would be is, if you are better than on a whole, is there a way you can put a sign on, on the front of your building that faces the parking lots just saying like, please, uh, keep parking spaces clear for customers of. But I mean, but I mean, it's not out on a pole like it's officially saying no parking places, it's just telling people as they pull up, hey, as a courtesy, as a courtesy to my business, please, please keep.
That's all they are.
Could be a courtesy signs that the city approves to say, as a courtesy, could you please leave this for patrons of, or here?
I don't think the city even needs, I don't think the city even needs to approve.
You know, when there's a special event or something going on on the square about all the markets, you put out the sign that says no parking. There's no, there's no paying attention to them, you don't want paying.
But I like better than the no parking, just say, like, Mike, it has a courtesy to the business, something like that. I don't, I think that would be.
It's a better bet, because then if they park there.
Then you're, then you're, you're essentially worse than parking, because you're really not saying it's no parking.
Well, probably with all the people, it says no parking.
It's not a park, I'm just going to park there. I don't think, say the most market, they just say no.
If she's, if she's parking on the side, how market bound the business, but if she's not, I don't know.
I don't remember exactly what the hell their word is. So what it comes down to is tell them text, put up signs if they want to.
Well, I don't know if it's saying that.
I would just say it's not our issue.
Yeah, the, that's, exactly.
It's not our city issue. We can't tell you what to do.
Do whatever your man wants to do.
I guess we can't, they can fill them up, I guess we can't take it down from there.
Well, they're on my hold.
I would suggest that instead of saying no parking, you say more, you know, as a courtesy, please keep these parking places free for patrons of whatever business, you know, something like that.
That's why I flipped on them.
No, it just says no parking down there, on that. I didn't say no parking.
I don't know why.
I don't think you should say no parking. And then also, if, if there is an issue where somebody repeating, so the parks are just known, there's nothing we can do about it.
I think what it says, if I remember properly, text is, I'm marking reserve for old hickory customers or something like that. If I remember right. Which is probably pretty strong, but. You know, there's nothing we can do about it, so. Right. So our official words, we're giving you no official word.
Take care of myself.
Yes.
I want to do it, do they?
Don't be fighting nobody else anymore.
Don't be a lot.
Don't be fighting nobody about the parking lot, all right?
I ain't able to fight anymore.
I might go forward to all the side, but it doesn't again.
Okay, let's move on to the ordinance annexation.
It's bill number 2018 747. An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory owned by Red Creek Properties LLC into the city of Seymour, Missouri. Yep, firstly.
I'll second.
I have a favor. We got a second reading on it?
Can we do roll call?
Yeah, I roll call that, yeah.
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Nadine Chris?
Yes.
Dan Wimmer?
Yeah.
Just so everybody knows, this is.
Yep, the only property out there.
Second reading is bill number 2018 747. An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory owned by Red Creek Properties LLC into the city of Seymour, Missouri.
I'll make the motion.
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Nadine Chris?
Yes.
Dan Wimmer?
Yes.
Well, now I got that ultimately reading board. Get one?
I want to start with that.
I don't have anything.
No.
Nadine nervous, this is very busy.
This lady came and talked to me on the drain over Cordia and Summit. She said when it rains, that, that drain is split. And it pops up when it rains. And she's wondering if they can maybe put it in the drain today.
You talking about the man, huh?
Yeah.
I'll talk to John and see if he can get one that bolts down or something.
She said when it rains.
The man, yeah.
And Mrs. Smith that lives over on, what street is that? That one.
South Street?
I don't know, it's not South Street.
Water.
Yeah.
Ken, yeah. She said there are a ditch that really needs to be fixed over there.
Oh, Ruby?
Yeah, Ruby.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll have probably talk to her, what she talked about.
And the horse matting, that house behind her. She said that looks like one. And I don't think anybody lives in that house right now, so. She was wanting, maybe, yeah, they did, she was wanting maybe somebody could look at.
I sent a letter and.
I don't really know.
Yeah, it's, the dress is real high end of the.
She said everything is in that.
Garbage all. Send a letter and get it.
Okay. And on Thoroughfare, right where those mailboxes are, like the nursing home, there are a huge hole there.
In, in the stream?
Uh-huh, you're right, stream. And has anybody heard anything from the audit, when they're going to be back or anything?
Which one? State or?
State.
They're working on their final report.
They were here today for the court.
They have all the work. I think that's kind of like an exit interview.
It was.
Did, didn't get a new flag up at the library?
Yes, ma'am.
And the ditch that's kept in the shop. So they're going to try to fix that.
What was the?
That hillside there.
Water ditch?
That water ditch?
Yes, that, yeah, we put that thing up line in.
Of work, right. And then I had a couple of complaints. When it, the sirens went off that night, when it was storming, that there's several cars there, but the storm showed it wasn't open. I don't know.
I don't know if they hit there. I didn't know it wasn't open or.
Said there's a bunch of cars lined up, but it wasn't, it wasn't open?
He, and he eventually did open it, didn't he, that night?
Well, I think he eventually opened it, but I think there's several on.
Yeah.
Where does he set that siren from, come over there?
They set it off with the tone of the radio.
He would not surprise, sir, it needs to be limited. I mean, before a siren goes off, I would agree that.
I should be there to open it. Have we get everything settled on that plan of the buildings?
Talked about that. As long as all of us left to. Whatever they. That's happened. That, that's happened. That's happened. I'm talking to Jay, he must have, he just went back to the. With the rain.
The whole thing out.
Yeah.
I mean, we got meters the first week.
Might be able to square it up.
I'll get Toby over there to look at it.
When our North Water Tower is down, is that, is that, how long is it gonna take for that to be?
Well.
Huh?
Well.
I mean, well, I'm sorry. Our well, our water. How long do you think it's gonna take for that?
Uh, Lynn was supposed to come, uh, look at it. Once they get here, I don't think it'll take them very long, but I don't know. Of course, I didn't get to talk to Pud today very much, and, and, and he didn't say anything about, you know, that they're supposed to come, he contacted them. And I'd say, once they get here and he set up, you know, pull it, and, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, in, I'll text him, get here, I'll, I'll have him, uh, contact them more and see what, see if there's a time scheduling, let's him know.
How do you think that'll affect the water pressure for the rest, uh, for everybody in the city?
Uh, your water pressures. I mean, you know, because they're that height, we're.
Yeah.
It, uh, it'll just make this pump here just run.
Work harder?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, oh, and we're back in that season again, those old apartments over there. The grass is about like, yay. It's, you know, it's getting, they don't, you know, they don't cut it, every year we go through this.
Is it Anderson Street?
It is Anderson and Main Street, right there. At the old skating rink. Yeah.
Last, regarding on, do we have currently a provision that allows us, just said our guys to go that and bill them?
We, um, what we normally do, we'll have to some so many days to clean it up. If they don't, we contract it. And then, um, so we do have a guy that mows that, that he, he kept it up last year. And he bills us and we put it to the property tax, but then on the taxes.
Yes, Michelle.
And on that, uh, the guy that does that, that is a whole lot cheaper, him billing, because most of them, like there was that one over there on the Fitting Street, he's putting lawnmower up three times, where, where, you know, just junk and, and water.
You never know what's going to decide in that.
In the long run, it's, it's cheaper contracting it out like that, 'cause.
Do we have somebody that identifies those properties for us, Sam?
Not necessarily, I, I depend on the guys to tell me about them. And then people call in, of course, and we still have, you know, orders to have it done. And then, in my driving around, I'll watch for that as well, I know that most everybody does.
It might not be a bad idea, uh, perhaps Mitchell, if, you know, you're over all the guys to assign a sign or somebody to perhaps go give a good look, see, and that way we can get that information to the drills in the office, and they can go ahead and get those leffers shot out and get a jump on this, because this is the time of year where grass is going crazy.
Yeah. I think that once they get their first notice and there's response, we just.
Start.
Just do it, every time he's done.
I'd say, let's do it, yeah.
And then the, the grass over there in that ditch on North Division, uh, it is hot, high again. And when it rains, you know, that's a place that it gets in there and floods.
That's right.
So if we don't keep that cleaned out, when we do have a big rain, we're gonna have flooding again right there.
Is that on the south side of?
Uh, it's on the same side as the bank.
Okay.
Same issue behind my house, that culvert that the city put in, it is this that we did, or this all, and it just gets backed up and it's a mosquito fest. Okay, that's all I have. I wrote one behind Mr. Fox. Uh, who, who does the grating? Who runs grater?
Uh, John running.
They grates down Stacey Street, and that is awful. And Mr. Fox, I'm surprised he's not having a fit.
Well, yeah. And Toby went out there and kinda scraped that up, where he peeled that grass back there. And they, I believe they went out there and cleaned it up.
Yeah, it's been cleaned up.
Well, they should have filled them holes in if they just wasn't, took grating. I don't know what they done, except made a mess, and all the holes filled up. Wouldn't they grate, if they could come back, maybe and put gravel in them holes, those holes, terrible. And Pioneer Street was the same way.
Oh.
If they're not gonna do it right, let's don't even, don't even say the grater is there.
Pioneer Street's always bad, I mean, we do try to stay on it all the way along.
Right there in front of Raymond Kimber's house, there are holes, it's terrible. They just throw gravel, throw. I know Mr. Fox was unhappy.
Yeah, I talked to him. He talked to me, I don't think that way.
Yeah. We'd like to get them graded, but not like that.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about sidewalks again. Uh, on a lot of our residential sidewalks, a lot of the older, in front of a lot of the older homes, they're just tore all to pieces. And I've had people tell me that, that'd be satisfied if the city could just, when they have any time, just dig them out. And it'd be a lot safer too, is to get rid, just get rid of them. Uh, and we, we started doing some of that for a while, didn't we, over here on Garfield?
Yeah.
We took some of that out, anyway, we could get some kind of program going again to just, it, it will be better to not have them than it will in the case that some of them are in.
Well, I agree with that. You know, we, over there on Garfield, that lady, got a tree out in front there, they were pushing the sidewalk up. Yeah, it was in the path to her mailbox, so.
Yeah, I had a woman over here on Forty, uh, and it's just, it's just all go down through there, you know, they're dangerous, yeah. But if we could, you know, I'd like to, I, I, I'd like to send some of them just to worry out, and we can work on, replace them later.
That's the only way to fix them, yeah, we'll take them out, I think.
Anyway, that's all I have for opening.
How's the city going cleanup doing?
Getting a lot of junk.
I bet so. I think it's big this time.
The metal dumpster from McCoy's, we had them dump it. And usually they bring another one for us to fill up, but they didn't this time, and I called them, and somehow they lost track of all their dumpsters. And they're trying to get them all back over to their yard. And I told them, we need one soon as we can get it back over here, where we can get that metal put back in it. And, uh.
What they pay us, they pay us about ten?
Uh, yeah, after the setting fee and.
Yeah. It doesn't amount to much, does it? I mean, it's better, we didn't get, paid anything for a long time, dude.
Well, before it, we certainly didn't, then we had to pay for them bearing it, but I mean, and it sits over there, or dead, all, uh, all near ground, uh, and then people, if they got refrigerators or, or anything like that, that's metal, you know, if they let us know, we let them throw it in there. You know, and, and that keeps them from sitting on the front porch and.
Yeah.
And, uh, what, uh, I don't know what one of them dumped, cost. It.
I really don't know.
That, um, is if, if we bought one just for that, 'cause I mean, usually, probably three times a year they'll, they'll dump it. The same time, the cleanup, where, I mean, there's a lot of people getting new washers and dryers, you know, or, or something, especially if junk is, uh, metal's low, that, you know, that the plant company don't wanna mess with it, you know, they'll bring it over there and, and, uh, you know, we let them throw it in there and, you know, or somebody that's putting tin on a barn or something, you know, or, or took some old fencing down, or anything that's metal, and they got any, you know, like, old, uh, water lines or something, you know, we throw in that, stuff like that. I mean, it's, don't make it rich, but I, I mean, it's, we get a little bit of something and, I mean, you know, I thought we could get a, maybe find a dumpster or, or one of them roll offs or something, maybe, you know, that, you know, McCoy's, you know, make a deal with one of them, you know, that they'd come dump it and bring it back or something, might make a little more money or, I mean, I don't know.
He's the guy that, where they don't try to do anything for the dumpsters. They're gonna, they don't care.
Does he?
I have to wish, check in on that.
Yeah.
Ass and ass.
Well, you're going up and eat.
Ass and ass.
Heard it'd be seventy-five bucks.
Yeah.
You get, I think I get four hundred bucks last time. He dumped this. Just raining stuff, I thought he'd call and get this out there for a hundred years, they don't care. So might be an opportunity.
If it is an ass or, I know they use bringing that semi truck down there, it is hard to load. Is it regular roll off? I mean, we, we, they, I mean.
I just have one other thing, I guess, uh, we were at that community, that committee, and they were asking about if the city would be alright with, uh, picking up the tail ones to porta potties, the ones that, one handicap during the Freedom celebration. Just keep the bathrooms locked over there, things crashed out.
Which one, you mean, uh?
Which software?
I wouldn't have a problem getting that, that's a celebration that the city participates in funding, so.
You know, we, we actually just take proof of the handicap, but. Are you talking about paying for porta potties, the city? Yeah, we pay, we pay for the handicaps always.
And then just wanted one, or two, two regular?
Three regular, one.
Yeah, just.
What, what's the pay on that?
Not much.
But we're paying somebody to clean the bathrooms out there.
For the baseball team that we pay, the Seymour baseball team.
And I mean, you know, we, you know, one time we probably pay somebody to take care of it, would be for the.
She said she liked to have clean bathrooms out there.
I did mention the traffic light on that thing.
My, my, I'm not, uh, still, I meant we have to add them, like, so.
Anyway.
No, they just said next.
And I don't mind if Courtney.
Okay, okay, so no.
Yeah, so you got two or three.
Three red and one handicap. And that's what the city, three red and one handicap. So I made up.
One more thing. I was talking to Sam about the bathroom at the cemetery. And having a pool, he's in Walcom, in the weekends. And then Walcom up at five or something, to tell all the walkers, you people, you go do out there.
That'd be nice.
The reason them they unlocked every day, they went out there, and I mean, there were species all over the wall.
Yes, I saw.
I mean, it was mad.
It was horrible.
And, uh, but, I mean, he had the bleach in there, and, and it made him sick, where, you know, trying to get all that stuff in there.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's.
It's a shame that. It is. You have a nice facility like that and.
You think they'll have it crashed out?
Destroy it.
I mean, that. I, personally, I think if you bring it off, if the porta potty, that'd be able, whoever came out there, turned that part deal, had a contract plan to clean them up, or.
Thought I could beat anything? Everybody good? Well, going to.
And Nadine. From.
They said, I got the, the board that's up here, uh, before you got, just, uh.
They got one in the making.
Yeah, I thought it was on my part. Yeah, we actually, I remember that before, uh, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago, and we got a meeting set, for hopefully, we should, gonna have like, ten, so like, all that more.
Take some building.
Yeah, yeah, after the meeting, but, things we be in position to do, so.
A little money before we turn them on. To help bring the contract.
I mean, roll call on there.
Was it Nadine, Nadine Chris?
Yeah.
I mean, Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter? Nadine Chris? Yes, Dan Wimmer?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting the juror.
We do a topic.